Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Wade?
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. The invocation, we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will move to agenda item number three as the consent agenda. The following businesses may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed, can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of August 1, 2022 through August 13, 2022. B. Treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for June 2022 showing cash and investments as of June 30, 2022. C. Human Relations Advisory Board Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mariette Clemens to continue serving on the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Mariette's term will begin August 17, 2022 and will expire August 17, 2026. D. Planning and zoning commission appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Eugene Bar Two and Roger Fry to serve as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, replacing Nathan Roberts and Dakota Worrell, who resigned. Eugene's term will begin August 19, 2022 and expire May 10, 2025. Roger's term will begin August 19, 2022 and expire August 5, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda items A through C as listed in Agenda Item Three.
A through C or D?
D, I'm sorry.
Second.
Can't read.
We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Four as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 1st, 5:30 PM, council clarification meeting. 6 PM, regular council meeting. September 8, 9 AM, city council work session. August 20, other events. August 20 is Free Admission Day at Zoo Idaho, sponsored by Connections Credit Union. We would encourage everybody to go and enjoy the zoo. It's going to be a, it sounds like Connections is going to have a big party.
Gourmet hot dogs.
Gourmet hot dogs, they said. Don't ask what those are, though.[228.48][228.48](Laughter) August 21, last day of the season for Ross Park Aquatic Center. August 22, September through September 5, annual maintenance for Community Rec Center. The front desk will remain open, but all other areas will be closed for maintenance. August 22, Welcome Back Orange and Black, event for ISU students in historic downtown. September 5, city offices will be closed for Labor Day. However, garbage and yard waste and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. As a reminder, there is an open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas in our community, and the school will be starting soon, so please remember to slow down in school zones. We'll move to Agenda Item Five, Highland Partnership Short Plat Application. Council may wish to consider a request by Highland Partnership, represented by Merrill Quell, City of Pocatello Public Works Department, for a short plat application request to subdivide 29.69 acre parent parcel into one encompassing 0.36 acres, more or less. The general location of the property is south of I-86 and north of Amy's Kitchen, located at 221 Philmeter Avenue. Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get Merrill to come up and talk to us a moment and explain this item further. The, I know what's going on. He explained it to us in the clarification meeting, but it's a bit confusing, and I want to make sure the public understands what's happening here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Merrill Quell, Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello. This piece of property, I am representing the Highland Partnership LLC because the city's interest in this 0.36 acres that we will know about coming up further in September for a purchase for a well site that will be in front of you. And in doing this, the city was requested to do and follow our ordinances, which was to, anytime we break off a parcel, off a parent or create a new parcel, it requires a plating process. In doing this, part of the agreement in moving forward and for the memorandum that was put together for the purchase of the, to hold aside for first round of refusal and so forth of this parcel was that the city would go through and do and perform the plating process. So through the City of Pocatello's Engineering and Survey Department and that, we've followed our ordinances by putting together this one-lot plat of 0.36 acres, and it is at the end of Philmeter.
Boulevard?
Avenue.
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 Boy, there's too many of those. So, anyway, it there. And currently, a few years ago, we got an easement for a water line. Last year, we got that water line in that goes around the perimeter of, the southern perimeter of the property, and this will be in that, the southeast corner is what we're looking at. So, that's what we're doing. I am not part of the Highland Partnership LLC. I am a City of Pocatello employee, going through and fulfilling an obligation that we committed to in moving forward to purchase this property.
Super. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheatham.
I would move for approval of the Highland Partnership Short Plat Application as recommended in Agenda Item Number Five.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Six, Airport Lease Agreement Resolutions Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign lease agreements and resolutions for the following leases at the Pocatello Regional Airport, subject to legal department review. A. Sky West Airlines, approximately 11,286 square feet of space in the terminal building for the purpose of operating a commercial service airline with a rental rate of $7,549.39 per month and a term of three years. B. Pocatello Trap Club, approximately 48.1 acres of property for the purpose of operating a trap shooting facility with rental rate of $1,554.12 per year and a term of 10 years. And C. Pocatello Terminal Advertising, right to display advertising exhibits in and about the airport in exchange for 25% commission with a term of five years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport lease agreements and resolutions as listed in Items A, B, and C of Agenda Item Number Six, all subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, Airport Lease Agreement Amendment Resolution Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement amendment and resolution between the city and McNabb Grain dated July 15, 1999, for property at the Pocatello Regional Airport, subject to legal department review. The amendment will allow for an abatement of McNabb's lease payment in return for McNabb's contracting and paying for roof, siding, and overhead door replacement to the warehouse they lease. The estimated cost of repair and abatement is $115,504.64.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I would move for approval of Agenda Item Seven, the Airport Lease Agreement Amendment Resolution between the city and McNabb Grain, for the cost of repair and abatement of $115,504.64.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Highway Pond Oxbow Grant Ratification, Science and
Environment. Council may wish to ratify a letter of support and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to submission of a $5 million grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and if awarded, accept the grant, subject to legal department review. The City of Pocatello would be a subcontractor to the Idaho Department of Lands, IDL. The city match commitment is 10%, of which 2.5% will be a cash match. If awarded, matching funds will be provided through external funding sources.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve Highway Pond, the Highway Pond Oxbow Grant Ratification for Science and Environment, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight. Authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Who was that? Was that Cheatham?
Yeah.
So, we've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Excuse me.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, State and Local Agreement, Montevista to Pocatello Creek
Road Pathway Project. Council may wish to consider the following items pertaining to the Montevista and Pocatello Creek Road Pathway Project. A. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign a state and local agreement, SLA, and adopt a resolution between the Idaho Transportation Department, ITD, and the City of Pocatello, subject to legal department review. And B. Authorize the use of funds in the amount of $3,934 as a pass-through accounting item. This is the estimated total match required for the design phase project development of the project and will be applied toward the total required match for the project. Funds for the project were awarded through a TAP grant. Funds are available in the Parks and Recreation Department FY 2022 budget. The full match will be funded by local nonprofit Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the state local agreement for the Montevista to Pocatello Creek Road Pathway Project, as outlined in Agenda Number Nine. A and B, authorizing and approving your signature on the agreements and, as necessary, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Bid Acceptance Agreement, WPCF Equipment Purchase, Aeration Basin Diffusers. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the WPCF Equipment Purchase Aeration Basin Diffusers to Xylem Water Solutions USA in the amount of $481,072 for the water pollution control aeration basin diffusers equipment and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the, or accept the bid for the aeration basin diffusers and that we authorize your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Bid Acceptance Agreement, Ross Park Aquatic Complex Pool Resurfacing. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Ross Park Aquatic Complex RPAC Pool Resurfacing Project for the main lap pool and activity pool. A. Accept the low-responsive bid received from Davis Aqua Chem Supply Company, DBA Mastercraft Pool and Spa, in the amount of $220,912.70. And if accepted, B. Authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and Davis Aqua Chem Supply Company, DBA Mastercraft Pool and Spa, in the amount of $220,912.70 for the Ross Park Aquatic Complex Main Lap Pool and Activity Pool Resurfacing Project, subject to legal department review. The resurfacing project will take place over two fiscal years and will begin during late August and September 2022, following the closure of the RPAC facility, and will continue in October and November 2023. Funding has been approved by council and allocated in the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year 2022 budget and the Fiscal Year 2023 Fund, 78 RPAC capital funds. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the bid agreement for the Ross Park Aquatic Complex and Pool, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion, was that?
Ortega.
Thank you. A motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Councilwoman Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Piggyback Bid Acceptance Truck Purchase, Water Department.
Council may wish to consider piggybacking the State of Idaho bid contract with Smith's Chevrolet for the procurement of four half-ton pickup, or half-ton work trucks for the water department, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents pertaining to the purchase. Total cost for the purchase is $135,026.72 and has been budgeted in the Water Department Fiscal Year 2022 budget, per the rate study. Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the piggyback bid acceptance for truck purchases through the Water Department, authorizing your signature on the contracts, subject to legal department review, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Departmental Fee Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution with Exhibits A through Y setting fees for fiscal year 2023, October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023. The Exhibits are, as outlined, A through Y.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2023 Departmental Fee Resolution, Exhibits A through Y, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, appropriating $156,634,586 for the 2023 fiscal year to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city, providing for the objects and purposes for which such appropriations are made and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose, levying ad valorem taxes in the amount of $32,213,263 for the fiscal year, beginning on the first day of October 2022 and ending the 30th day of September 2023 upon all of the taxable property within the City of Pocatello, to provide revenue to pay current general liability insurance, street, recreation, cemetery, airport, public library, capital improvements expenses, and to pay interest and principal on general obligation bonds of the City of Pocatello, providing that a certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the county commissioners of Vannett County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, and with the Secretary of State of the State of Idaho, providing for this ordinance to take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bray?
I'm going to vote like I did at the study session. There's a lot of good stuff in this budget, but I don't know that the budget has the infrastructure behind it to carry forward. I don't, we talked a lot about blueprints at our meeting. There are no blueprints for this budget for the years that follow, and so therefore, I got to vote no.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
I'm going to vote yes, and I also want to really thank our staff that all worked together to put together this budget. I think it's a strong budget, and I just appreciate all the work that they have done, so, yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
I think that there is a lot in this budget that is worthy, but I think it remains inconsiderate of taxpayers. I think the way the process moved along was irresponsible and unprofessional, based on industry best practices and on our own adopted financial guidance documents. So, despite what I think are some very good things in this budget, I cannot vote for it.
Plaid?
Before I vote, I just want to thank the council, staff, everybody for the hard work. Everybody's done a lot of hard work. It's been quite a process, so thank you very much, and yes. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Fifteen, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of three minutes per speaker and 15 minutes for this item. Nikki Taysom.
Thank you. Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. The first article of the Constitution states, "No capitation or direct tax shall be laid unless in proportion to the census or enumeration herein before directed to be taken. No money shall be drawn from the treasury but in consequence of appropriations made by law." Article Four states, Section Four, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." Article Six states, Second Paragraph, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof," under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land. First Amendment states, to the Constitution, "Congress shall make no law representing an establishment of religion," I mean respecting an establishment of religion, "or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Fourth Amendment states, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures, including taxation, and fees, shall not be violated." Fifth Amendment states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just Tenth Amendment states, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people." We've made, there's been decisions made this evening and previous meetings, including things regarding the budget, and I've looked over this financial report. It is irresponsible, and it's actually, in some instances, seditious and treasonous. We have people losing their homes. We have people that don't even have enough food to eat, can't afford to pay their water bill. Small businesses are backing up and leaving, and others aren't coming here because we have some of the highest taxes and some other things that are not good regarding this place. I appreciate all true service. I honestly do. I know it's hard work putting together a budget. Sell off the Ross Park Pool. I've been to meetings where you said you're not even making revenue to make ends meet to pay for it. Sell it off. It's not the government's job to be in the pool business, or the wellness complex, or parks and recreation sports. You're not to be in the garbage business. Sell it all off and put it back in the public hands, who can then do it the right way. You're overloading yourselves and everybody else. Nobody's winning this game anymore. Shut down the alcohol and tobacco and porn and lotteries and every other evil that's destroying people because they can't take it anymore. They're turning into those behaviors. We've had some of the highest suicide rates here in the nation.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki.
Share it in the name of Jesus.
Randy Spencer.
My name is Randy Spencer, 2712 Jerome, Pocatello. My wife Peggy and I have lived in Pocatello and Chubbick for 49 years. Our two sons received their education from kindergarten through the 12th grade in Pocatello and Chubbick. They are both physicians. As a family, we thank you for your special service. You do much work for which we are certainly unaware. I come to you because you have set a superb example, as we have seen many mayors and many city councils. Your compassion, your cooperation, your respect for one another, with a minimum of divisiveness, acrimony, and competition, has been well observed by the citizenry of this community. Some years ago, I belonged to the Portniv Valley Interfaith Fellowship. Pastor Roger Bray was and is a member of that organization. We watched you carefully. We decided that if we are going to be successful with Christian faiths, and our Muslim friends, and our Jewish friends, and many people who just wanted to have friends, we would follow the example of the city council. They certainly did an admirable job. We supported each other in times of trial and tragedy. We had an organ that went out. A wonderful organ player who played in the community was no longer able to play. One of the faiths said, "I think we can help," so they went to their headquarters, and a few weeks later, a check came. We gave that check to the faith that had the organ that did not work. It now works, and concerts are free and available. That faith gave the faith that gave a contribution a T-shirt which said, "I was an organ donor to the First Presbyterian Church," as it was called then. We had fun. We celebrated national and theological celebrations. One of the special ones was a Martin Luther King celebration. We would have special speakers representing our black community, and they came. We all sang in choirs together. We all filled a particular congregation chapel together, and an individual who put the program together and who passed out the programs, prepared the programs, made his church available, was Pastor Roger Bray. I thank Roger Bray for his marvelous contribution to the Portniv... I thank Roger Bray for his marvelous contribution to the Portniv, to the Portniv Valley Interfaith Fellowship. We thank you for all the great work you do. We have marvelous organizations that watch you carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for attending tonight. Thank you, council. With that, we are adjourned.